Call this meeting to order, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Here.
DePena.
Here.
Graziano.
Here.
Notari.
Here.
Councilmember Ravel will be a couple of minutes late and so will Councilwoman Strumelberg, Mayor Melhem.
Here. Sunshine notice?
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting was published in the December 18th issue of the Star Ledger and December 20th issue of the Bellville Times. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Bellville Times bulletin board and a copy is on file in the municipal folks' office.
Okay. Let the record reflect, Councilman Ravel has arrived.
The president.
So next up we have presentations. We're gonna actually, to give Councilman Ravel another second, we're gonna go to item B. So do you want to read that one?
Sure.
I'm sorry. Fledges releases. Almost forgot. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the judiciary public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sorry about that. Next we're gonna do with presentations. We have two presentations on these agenda today. We have A and B. We're gonna just skip real quick to B first. So Perk, do you want to just read B?
Sure. Alyssa Sanford, excuse the pronunciation, Bellville High School, who are in fourth place in the 100th pound division in the NJSIAA state girls wrestling finals.
Nice. Alyssa's here, her family in front, I believe. So Alyssa, I'm gonna have you come on up forward and Councilman Graziano is gonna present a proclamation to you and then you might have to say a speech.
So, everybody, this is Alyssa Sanford. She's sophomore, right, in Bellville High School and Alyssa, the mayor and council would like, love to present to you a proclamation, but before I do that, to give you a little about Alyssa. Second year?
Yeah.
Wrestling? And her record as a varsity wrestler was 10 and 8. Mind you, that's wrestling against males and females, but all her varsity matches prior to entering the tournaments and the state tournament were against males. That said, she placed second in the first ever girls wrestling tournament in Bloomfield. The proclamation also will tell you that she finished second in the first ever held girls regionals and then fourth place in the first ever held girls state wrestling tournament. That is a huge, huge accomplishment for anyone who knows about the sport of wrestling. I stand here proud as a former wrestler. And I congratulate you. But that being said, whereas Alyssa Sanford, a sophomore at Bellville High School, a pioneer in New Jersey wrestling, yet New Jersey wrestling girl, participated in a groundbreaking NJSIAA girls regional wrestling at Red Bank Regional High School in Red Bank, New Jersey on February 17th, 2019, with more than 260 girls from all, all corners of the state. And whereas the wrestlers battled from two regions, north and south, and Alyssa finished second in the 100th pound weight class at the tournament qualifying with an impressive performance and advanced into the 2019 NJSIAA state championship, being one of only two Bellville wrestlers held in Atlantic City in 2019. And whereas Alyssa, as one of the 60 female wrestlers qualifying to compete in the first NJSIAA double A state girls wrestling finals at Boardwalk Hall in Atlantic City, New Jersey, faced strong competition and earned fourth place in the 100th pound division. Whereas her success at the regional and the state events can be measured in more, in more than her wins. Alyssa is a trailblazer who jumped into the unknown and is setting an example and standards for future wrestlers. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and municipal council of the township of Bellville extends its congratulations to Alyssa for earning fourth place in the 100th pound division at the groundbreaking NJSIAA state girls wrestling finals and wish her continued success and happiness in the years to come.
If you could just stay up for one second.
Yes.
We might, you wanna just go around, see if you have any comments or anything like that?
Hey, God bless you. I've seen you wrestle and I give you a lot of credit.
Yeah, I was actually a former wrestler too, about 105 pounds. Yeah, about that weight now, yeah. So I give you much respect and I thank you for your support. Thank you.
I am not a wrestler, but I do want to congratulate you on just really breaking through an area that was mostly male dominated. It made me very proud. I followed through the whole weekend, very, very proud. You're making Bellville proud, you're making women proud and yet we just, I'm hoping that you have many more victories.
Congratulations again. I did follow. My only disappointment is that Councilman Graziano is not in singa tonight. That would've been more appropriate. Congratulations to you. Very well deserved, very heartfelt. Deputy Mayor?
Just wanna congratulate you all, so you should be very proud of your family and show us very proud of you too.
I too congratulate you. Did a great job. Lots of luck in the future.
Thank you for representing Bellville.
Thank you so much.
So we have one more proclamation. It's gonna be for Mr. Bobby Alessio, gold medal winner at the New Jersey State Champions in men's gymnastics. So we're gonna have the, Mr. Alessio and his family come forward. And this will be presented by Councilman Ravel and Councilwoman Burke.
You wanna read it or you wanna?
No.
I get the reading.
You want me to?
Yeah, I'll be.
Get my glasses.
Bobby Alessio, we got those, he will be proud.
My glasses.
You hear me? How you doing? Good. So not only are they, are they Bellville residents, right, but they actually live around the corner from me and across the street from Mike. So, whereas the USA Men's Gymnastics New Jersey State Championship was held in Bloomfield High School, Bloomfield, New Jersey on March 16th, 17th, 2019. And whereas Bobby Alessio, age 13, is a Bellville resident attending Good Shepherd Academy and a member of the National Junior Honor Society, who has been competing in men's gymnastics since the age of four.
Wow.
And has won six, six state championships. Actually amazing, Bobby. Amazing. Whereas, you wanna read the rest or, here, you read the rest.
Whereas Bobby Alessio, at the New Jersey State Championship Men's Gymnastics, competed in six events of the level nine division, age 13, 14, where he earned a 76.00 all-around score and gold medal. Whereas Bobby Alessio, having earned the gold medal at the New Jersey State Championship in men's gymnastics, moves on to compete in the region seven championships in Maryland on April 4th to 7th, where he will try to achieve a qualifying score to make the 2019 Junior Olympic Men's Gymnastics Championship being held in Reno, Nevada. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and municipal council of the township of Bellville congratulate Bobby Alessio, the gold medal winner of the level nine division of the New Jersey State Championship Men's Gymnastics, and wish him success in his upcoming competitions. Congratulations.
I mean, you've accomplished phenomenal feats at this point, but I gotta ask one question. Did you guys just get back or did you go?
Yeah, went to Maryland.
Okay.
Finished third in the region.
Oh, great. You're great.
So qualified for, will be going to Reno?
First to Reno.
It's combined the two ages, so he did finish first in the region, so he finished third in the region.
That's fine.
But that's okay. Qualified in school, you needed it.
Keep up the good work.
That's cool.
Both in school and everything.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing pride.
Oh, yeah, amazing. We're very proud of you. And even more amazing is that for this meeting tonight, Councilman Ravel cut his hair just for you.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Congratulations. I know the hard work you put in. I see you packing the car up sometimes for the go away for weekend trips.
You got great parents too.
Congratulations. Hard work, deserves to be credited and we appreciate that you're with Bellville, really good. Deputy Mayor?
Congratulations, we wish you the best. Thank you.
I wish you all the best. I know you do a good job, whatever you do and wherever you go. Thank you.
And congratulations. I mean, it's, today's a groundbreaking day for Bellville. Young, talented, strong, smart, right up through to where we're at with, with the wrestling piece of it, but thank God, have fun and continue your success.
Thank you again.
I wanna thank you, both of you two, for giving us your dad, 'cause he's one of Bellville's finest. I appreciate it every day.
At this point, I'm gonna need a motion to go into executive. Some move. We have a motion made in second. Before we call the roll, I just wanna make, just a quick announcement. We have a lot of new people here today that were here for proclamation. We're gonna vote right now to go into what's called executive session. Unfortunately, after we vote, we do have to clear the room out and we're gonna go into some private business. We probably, we usually don't put a timeline on how long we're gonna be in executive, but I can tell you it's gonna be at least an hour. Okay? Thank you. So we have a motion made in second to go into executive session, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Ravel.
Yes.
Strumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melhem.
Yes. Just calling the meeting back to order, I apologize for the long executive session. We are now gonna continue with our regular meeting. Actually, this is a portion scope of the conference session in the meeting. Item number six, combined conference, regular meeting, topics that I've put on, a couple different items here. Again, this is a work session type conference. You're gonna hear us discuss multiple topics. Unfortunately, there's no public participation in this portion of the meeting. You'll have your chance later during the public comment.
The first item that I put on is recycling calendar. We see this recycling calendar come out usually in August. It's supposed to come out in Ju-, in July. It usually comes out a month late. It's a, it's a very dated looking, old fashioned calendar, twenty, a lot of pages, put it that way. For the price that that cost us, for about a couple thousand dollars more, we could break that down to two mailings instead of one. Right now, we mail it out in July for August, but we have to know all of our events for a year out in order to put them on the event, on the calendars. So if we just broke that down to two different meetings for another couple thousand dollars, we can turn the entire calendar into newsletters. And I think, especially talking to a lot of seniors, they often, there's no more local newspapers, there's no more printed newspapers and they don't have access to our social media and our website. So that the, I've seen in some other towns where they basically take their newsletter, their recycling schedule and they keep it to six months only, but they redesign it so it's smaller and they still have about six pages for news. So every single thing that we put out on our website, I've seen it whereby there's township events, township public positive news stories there, and then there's little columns for each ward or each district or something like that, which would be really nice that twice a year we could do that. And really, just, I think it's just an upgrade and it's, it comes in at only probably another couple thousand dollars more. That said, the next item I have, we're gonna go a little quick, 'cause I know we were going late. Next item was a community garden. We've since looked at a couple of different facilities that we have. I'm not necessarily thrilled with the condition of our parks and public spaces. We've already taken the first steps to take the old pistol range and make that more of a nature preserve. We're potentially getting a nice grant to do that. We don't maintain it and it's very difficult to maintain 'cause it's, it's a swamp and it floods and it's, it's just not maintained. So why not convert that into something that's more of a passive nature park? We already took the first steps on that. We're now looking at what we can do potentially with Fairway Park. Fairway Park is a huge tract of land that because it's next to the river and because it floods, we don't use it. If you've ever been there, I implore you to go and walk it, 'cause I've been there now on and off for the past year. We do not use it, it's a waste. So coming up with a creative solution to utilize that park would be something I'd be interested in doing. We're not gonna solve that problem right now, I just want to throw it out there. That's really all.
We still have baseball fields.
We have a, we physically have a diamond there. It's not, it's not active. Because it does not maintain the fences or anything.
But I know we're getting late, there's no need to discuss that right now. I'm gonna move on to Councilwoman DePena.
Thank you. First, I'd like to discuss with you in terms of our homeless rehabilitation program. There was an issue that was brought to my attention in regards to one of our seniors whose home was deemed uninhabitable and then this person was evicted from her home, then living in the home of a good neighbor, who then ended up in a situation where now he was in breach of his own lease and I got involved in the situation, just trying to help this person and trying to understand how we got to the point where one of our seniors is now homeless, placed in, you know, picked up by, by a neighbor who was almost homeless as well, because he was breaching his contract and he was having issues with his landlord. So through that, looking into what we can do and how we can support our seniors, I came across this program that is, it's sponsored by, by the county and I'm aware that Councilman Notari and Burke brought in the program a few years ago by speaking with the gentleman who, who does it. So this program is, it's, it's a grant, it's, it's a loan that turns into a grant after 10 years and the only, you can apply for that and the only requirement is, obviously it's income based and it's also that you remain in Bellville for 10 years. They begin first with an information session. I, I met with the gentleman from the county and I asked him if he would be able to host this in Spanish and he says he can as well, just to let the community know what possibilities we have and what they can, what they can apply for and, you know, I think it benefits everyone. But also I did want to bring up the first portion of it because it, it concerns me a lot that we would find ourselves, that we would let our seniors down that way, that we would allow this home to get to that point when I asked our construction department, what's the process like? What do we do when we approach situations like this? What I was told is, well, you know, the person receives a citation and then they go to court. And, you know, we're talking about an 80 something year old woman who doesn't have family, who, you know, now is going to court and we're constantly giving them citations and then eventually we say, well, you can't live there anymore. So that to me is disappointing and I think we failed a person in our township by allowing that to get to that point where this person came to court, no one told them, you can apply for this program. So my thoughts are, this is great, I would love to have in our next, in our next work session, this gentleman to come in and discuss the program and, and schedule a Spanish workshop and an English workshop so that every one of the community know that this is there, but also I would like to revisit our process, how we work this in terms of, and I, I don't know, I'm, I'm just debating this so that you can guide me into what would be the best way. I, I believe we have to work with our construction department, also work with our court system so that when someone comes here because they have a violation and they're in their 80s, they, they don't handle homeless. This is not okay. So yeah, so this is in terms of that. The gentleman says he's available for a next work session to come in and discuss it with us and then we'll just have to discuss when would be the best time to schedule something.
Through the chair, just, just so you know, we, as part of our, I guess, coming to terms with COA or whatever it comes, we had set up, started to set up a rehabilitation fund so that money goes in that, that will be available to certain people within the community as well. So I, I don't know if we.
It's only at, I think it's in the like 30 to 40,000 range.
Right.
But with the, the new housing coming in.
Right.
They're paying.
So we should have, not only should we have the caring program, we should also have something.
Yeah, and just also the way to communicate to the people.
It's a question of process.
Exactly. And that's what I'm questioning, the process and how we can work on and be a little bit more proactive and that's.
No doubt.
Okay? And then in terms of the recreation department, our program, it's almost coming to an end. I was just informed that we were only approved for one session, so I was a bit concerned about that, but I did bring it up to Maury's attention. We're getting, we're receiving a lot of great feedback from the parents, so I just wanted to bring it up to make sure that everyone understood how much the families are enjoying it and Maury says he believes it's something that we can adjust in terms of creating another session, but not only doing that, but also there's a portion of social justice that's coming in with the program where the teachers, she's instructing the children in terms of recycling and usage of, responsible usage of the art products and things like that. So I'm hoping to, I've discussed this with the director of the library and I'm hoping to put together an exhibit, or not exhibit, at the end of, of the next session where the whole township can come in and see what they're doing. It's slightly different from what our, our shows will look like in a public school because we have a bit more flexibility. You know, we don't have a curriculum from the state and benchmarks that we have to meet and so we get a lot more freedom in terms of the, the creativity that the students can, can just tap into. So I'm hoping to do something like that maybe in the month of May and I did want to bring that up to you, so make it a reception where also we can reach out to artists within the township, you know. I, yes, just this week, excuse me, at the coffee with the mayor and the library, someone asked about artists. Are we doing any public art? This is something that I'm passionate about. I do believe that it's important in terms of public arts, it, it brings a sense of community and I'm hoping that we can do this as a dual event where we can display the artwork of the children, but at the same time connect or in-network all of our artists, whether they are in high school, whether they're children or adults that are here in the town. So that's, those are my two items for today.
I, I saw that we've gotten great, great feedback on that program on social media. I went to go visit the program on Saturday and the parents were saying it's about to end and they would like to go another two or three more sessions. Keep in mind, I don't know if it's 100%, but it's pretty close to 100% self-funded because we charge small fees for it. So it's self-funded.
So we're just thinking one more session, then take a break for the summer and then resume back in the fall.
Any thoughts, comments on that?
Okay. The county program has gone for 15, 20 years and now. And they do, they, you know, we do meet and I'm always involved with that, so you can take it over now, you know, because now it's all, you know.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not understanding, take over what?
Well, no, not to take it away, not to take it away. You might as well head it now. I mean, I did it for 15 years. I know the whole thing, what's going on with it.
I don't think it's something that we head though.
This is a county program.
I, I know.
She would promote it.
Oh, you'd promote it? Okay.
Yes, I, I work with the.
She brought, she brought Elvin here.
Thinking about the whole day.
Yes, I know that he was here a few years ago. Exactly. And my, my concern was that, that families now don't know about it, that maybe it was done years ago, but it's something that must be done every year.
Well, the county does it all the time. There are always.
But we are in local government here, so I wanna bring it to Bellville.
Okay. The county brought it to Bellville, of course.
Okay, that's it.
Councilwoman Graziano, you're up.
Yes, if you don't mind, I can do my little committee reports. I just moved here so they can keep it on. Is that okay?
You're gonna say it there and say it here, it's the same.
I have more on my.
You're limited to one thing.
That's why I'm going.
It's a slippery one, I guess, though. All right, so we're gonna go next to Councilwoman Graziano's, you'll lead this time. We are going to approval minutes.
Can we move both of them?
Yes, you can.
Can I move both for approval?
Second. Motion made in second, go, move both or call roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Ravel.
Yes.
Strumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melhem.
Yes. For the manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. My first item tonight concerns budget introduction, which we were prepared to do for this evening. However, we had to verify some debt service numbers, which are still in the process of being done and we will be introducing our budget on the 23rd. We also have a DPW report. We trimmed trees on 15 streets throughout the township. We removed one. We have patched 21 different streets. Our, we cleaned six township properties. Our varsity baseball field is, has been improved. The infield is done. We just need to put some additional clay there. It should be ready for play by next Friday, so we look forward to that. The contractor did an excellent job with Mr. Harris's oversight. We had 12 main breaks on various streets. That's all I have there.
Good. Any questions?
Yeah, real quick, with the budget tomorrow, could you talk with our town engineer and see if we could get a price on paving the lot on Bellville Avenue? I know we asked multiple times for that, but I haven't seen any numbers.
Lot on Bellville.
Where's that?
Behind the other parking lot. The one that Mr. Grant did only generously reminds us all the time about.
I think it's the one, this little lot right here.
I'm talking about, yeah, the side. On the side. Yeah, across the street, yeah. Right across the street. No, ankle part, you probably get about 10 and there. Just the price.
Just if, if I might add bluntly, we've been talking about that little parking lot across the street here for years. I had Tom Harris looking at and costing out for me how much would cost to level that out, all right, to put some gravel there.
Wait, just one second.
The way it's cut notes, very.
It's, it's not gonna handle a lot of cars, but it may give a little bit of relief. But if it's, it's an inexpensive fix, then we'll move forward with it. But I'll, I'll get back.
Jim, go see what the price is.
Next item, we have reported the mayor, a couple of quick items. Today's Tuesday. Yesterday, Councilwoman DePena and I met with Senator Ruiz here at Town Hall. Dr. Tomko was involved. She has an initiative to bring potentially free pre-K to Bellville and that's something that the school district is supportive of and she just wanted us there to hear her out. We sat in on that and talks are ongoing and Dr. Tomko has some homework that he's, some due diligence that he's up to, but we could potentially bring free pre-K for up to 300 students on a grant in the state literally doesn't cost Bellville anything. Mr. Manager mentioned the varsity baseball field. I was there last Friday morning. We were adamant last fall that we were gonna get this field ready. The contractor did a good job with a special kind of drainage he did in the outfield. The weather turned. Unfortunately, we only lost the week, but they were here early in the spring. We had some weather, so due to that weather, we were a little delayed, but they were back. I was there physically, I said they are, they're an excellent contractor, they're doing excellent work. My freshman year, we lost the entire season for that field, so it's nice that hopefully we're only gonna lose a, only gonna lose a week. You're gonna hear a communication. We have a date for Bellville's first ever state of township address, but we have a communication on that. The clerk will read that in a few minutes. We were a little delayed here. We had a, a longer than usual executive session and that's because of a process that this governing body is pursuing with regard to manager search. I've mentioned it before, Mr. Tucci in December gave us his intentions that he would be leaving sometime in the spring. We now kinda have a firm date on that. We started a process, that process was advertising leave municipalities for a manager. We did that the entire month of December. We fielded about 12 or 15 different resumes. This council decided to form a subcommittee to review. We did that. That whittled it down to about five and we brought in what we believe are the top three candidates today for a meet and greet and interview and that's why we went a little long. That process is going well, I'm very happy with it. I think it's kinda the first time in almost probably the history of Bellville that we've actually done that as a governing body. So it's been new to us and it's been interesting to us 'cause we're all going through this for the first time. I attended a governor's roundtable on Thursday. It was just SS County mayors. We had a very frank conversation with the governor. Two of my questions revolved around something to do with his budget and our allocation. I'm not sure it's a communication, but our DOT funding, Mr. Tucci, was down. So last year, we had $820,000 from DOT for roads. This year's only 620. So the way that worked is on Sunday, I got a call from the governor's office telling So last year, we had $820,000 from DOT for roads. This year's only 620. So the way that worked is on Sunday, I got a call from the governor's office telling me that they had awarded, DOT had awarded us $620,000, and they asked me for a quote. I said, wow, $620,000, that's great. And they said, well, can we have a quote? And I said, sure, and you just let me know what our funding was last year. They called me back 20 minutes later and said, apologies, Mayor, it was 850,000. I said, you still want that quote? They didn't want the quote anymore. So I brought that up on Thursday directly to the governor, and yeah, that's that. The budget is the budget. That's where they're at with that. I also brought up his need for every time there's a threat of snow to declare a state of emergency, told him that that does affect us as municipalities with regards to our labor contracts and overtime and everything else. Had to get those two things off my chest. Yesterday, we did National Library Week at the library. I hosted, or I sat in for Meet the Mayor on Monday morning. We had the student, government, student council, government, and student ambassadors. That went great. Was, the library looks beautiful, by the way. It's decorated with cherry blossoms, and that's it. No more from me. I brushed through that. Finally, we have committee reports before we go the rest of the meeting. We kind of do this quite unique here on the council now. We have ad hoc committees. Anybody has a specific interest or, or background, they're on a committee. I know Councilman Revelle, Councilman Graziano are on the IT committee, and somebody hasn't updated. Councilman Graziano's got updated.
You want me to? Yeah. Anyway, so we've gotten some feedback from the people that design networks for us. We're gonna have another meeting with them just to find down what our budget is and where we're gonna go with it. I think it'll be a great opportunity for us to really bring this into the year of 2000.
That's it for Y2K.
Yeah, Y2K, we're ready.
Mr. Manager, can you just make a, I don't know if we have that meeting scheduled. Do we have that meeting?
Yeah. No, we need to schedule that.
Follow-up meeting with the IT?
Yeah, based on the design that.
We all got it now. What do you call it, schematic or whatever it was?
Yes, visio.
A visio.
You said you had something else coming?
Yeah, if I can jump on coattails with the IT. When we first got elected and came on, I started looking at the bill list, and wireless is a big thing of mine, along with internet and things of that nature. So looking through, I see back in 2009, there was an ordinance that was passed about cellular phones to employees. So I talked tomorrow and I asked for some, some bills and to come to find, I really wanna see tomorrow if we can look at it, because there seems to be more than needed out there. Some people have two. Their, you know, names are tagged. There are people that should, that shouldn't have it, and I think if we look at that and look at the carriers and look at who, maybe we can save a lot money, a lot, a lot more money, or let me say it that way, more money, and that, I'm just looking at the ordinance, so I do apologize. That's, yeah, and then also, in today's day and age, everybody has a cellphone, and this is, this is why I wanted just to have a conversation here. We all have cellphones, right? So depending on your position, right, do we need the town? Do we need to pay for those positions when we have, I mean, the packages are great, unlimited plans, we can save the town, we can save the town money, right, to put back? Because just the one bill I looked at, it was substantial. It can be anywhere between $15,000 and $20,000 a year on one bill. So I would just like to ask if you can pull some numbers together, and we can see from that to see where we can cut back maybe at all.
Just to consolidate it too. Because I know I've seen some have Sprint, some have Verizon. I'm sure there's a better plan if we could put it together.
And that kind of evolved. I remember when I was here back in 2000, you know, early on, you had a cellphone, you got 30 minutes. So if we wanted a director where a department had to be on call, and we didn't want to eat up their time, we paid for it. But like government, it just kept going. So now we have, we're giving out phones to everybody, and we're racking up $1,000 bills a month.
So on a different note, for the Board of Education, I know there was some conversation over the past couple of meetings about the online agendas. So I met with Dr. Tomko, and he provided me information for Board Docs, which now was all moved up to what they call iCompass, and now Diligent. And it's a company out there that does specifically, while they do boards and they also do municipalities, they currently handle, here in New Jersey, minimum two, Jersey City and Home Depot. I had a WebEx today with them. It was phenomenal. They, they offer a lot. They're gonna send me a PowerPoint, which I'll share with you tomorrow, and then they're gonna send some pricing to you, and we'll go that way, and we can see where it goes. But it was really, really good, and it, it actually works with live streaming, depending what widget you want it paid for. So I just wanted to share that with everybody because I know everybody's interested in the online movement and to save money with the paper. The other thing was, in a conversation with Dr. Tomko, and this was, I brought it up based on a meeting I went to last month, and that had to do with, I think the Board of Education is putting a building or looking to propose a building, $200,000 building down here by, where the old building was, by number nine school, where they had the buses?
Oh, where the rink was?
Right, yeah, right by the rink. So I said, you know, I drive around town, and I see, and I said, hey, would you be opposed, Dr. Tomko, in considering the big hangars in DPW? Because a lot of them are empty, and they're only storing, they're not putting, they're not putting lifts in, they're not doing anything. This is where my mind went, shared services. We have two people in the Board of Education that actually takes care of the vehicles, if you will. If agreed upon, come down, that $200,000 or plus can be saved to do other things, whatever Board of Education feels, come down here, and the two bodies will be here on site that actually can help us work on vehicles that we need to move along. And oh, by the way, if I'm not mistaken, when I was on the Board, it may have changed, there's no licensed diesel mechanics for buses, so they outsource that. We have a diesel mechanic here, and we can help one another and share the cost base. So I don't know. I mean, his ears poked up. He was nice to say, hey, nice to think about it. Where did it go after that? No conversation, but I wanted to bring it back and share it with the team, and just, hey, let's roll it around and see how one can help, how we can help each other. And that's it.
Second chance. But why did you do it right now?
The second chance.
The second chance. Tyrese selling lawsuits.
I mean, smell's good, and the floor's clean, but hopefully it'll be dry by the time we're done.
Marie, anything, any kind of council committee thing, report, anything?
Not, not really.
Okay.
Doctor Tar, Councilwoman?
Yes, I just wanted to let everyone know that on March 30th, we had our first Women Empowerment event, and it was a great success. I wanted to say thank you to everyone that was there. We had over 100 people, which was, the fire, you're not hearing that, we were actually, no, sorry, we had over 100, more than what we expected, but I just wanted to say thank you to Clara Mas for hosting and always being gracious in terms of partnering with us, and also to Sanitas and Horizon that sponsored the event. Thank you to the mayor and just the council that did show up. We appreciate. I think that that day, we started a whole process of, of community in a different level where women were empowered, they walked out of there, but most importantly, it was a multicultural event in, in terms of, I'm sorry, not multicultural, but multi-generational, which was my goal, where we wanted to connect the high school room, so we had young students part of this panel. So it was a great event, and we're hoping to do it once a year. Women are asking for it again, but once a year is enough. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this weekend, we had our autism color run. I just wanted to thank the committee. It was an extremely successful event. The committee has Councilwoman DePena, and also here's Nick Cindito and from the Board of Education, Chris Lamparello. We had over 400 people participate. Everything went smooth. The kids had a great time. We did a color blast in the end that the kids had to actually hang out, have a good time in, and it was good, all-around good. We're planning for next year, and we'll have some numbers at the next meeting on, on what we actually were able to raise. And we got some drone footage, too. Coming short. We have drone footage. Yeah.
Next up, communications?
A invitation received from hashtag Better Bellevue Civic Association to host the first ever Bellevue State of the Township address. B letter received from the state of New Jersey Department of Transportation stating the township has been selected to receive funding for the 2019 various road improvements project in the amount of $619,000. C, I also have a letter that was received from municipal court judge Karen Smith. After 20 years of service, she will be retiring on June 30th, 2019.
I don't think so. We don't accept that if you can't retire. Next up, ordinances. Ordnances for introduction.
Ordinance number one, an ordinance to amend the revised charter ordinances of the township of Bellevue, chapter 8 dash 2.7, stopping or standing prohibited during certain hours on certain streets for the purpose of street cleaning.
Motion introduced, second.
Motion made.
Let's see. I'd like to know, Kelly, who introduced that ordinance? Because it was in my ward, and I did not know about it until I got my agenda. Doesn't say who presented it.
It's not your ward. It's not your ward. It's neighbor night's call. Actually, John.
Magnolia is my ward. Magnolia Street.
Chief.
Stop and go, you, Councilwoman.
Pardon?
Stop and go.
You should know.
Well, it's Magnolia on.
No, Magnolia was added.
It's Magnolia.
He added Magnolia after talking to Officer Pignataro.
Thank you.
Pignataro, we'll play there.
I have that here.
It's the parking around schools in the morning. The teachers are getting tickets for street cleaning.
But that would be nice if they would tell me, since it was my ward, and I would know that.
That probably should have known.
Do you know who presented it, though?
I did, I did. For around the, for around the street. Not Pignataro.
That got added, it got added.
What probably happens is complaints come in, whether through the manager's office, the clerk's office, they refer to the police department. Police department investigates, and then things end up being.
Yeah, because I caught Pignataro, and he didn't know anything about it.
All right, so should we take it off? Along with the.
No, we don't know what it's about.
We just introduced it anyway. It's for the teachers. The teachers are getting tickets.
I couldn't take Magnolia off, just do.
I want it on, but I want to know why, why they're doing that.
We do have our department head chief here. Chief, would you happen to know, is it still a street cleaning thing for school four? Since the first view?
You know what, it could be.
If it's, if it's a mirrored, if it's a mirrored ordinance from, that it is. They're gonna clean the streets earlier so that the teachers could.
Can I say something? All they did was change the time.
And just changing the time change.
It's just a ground change. Nothing else has changed. They just made it an hour later to begin.
Teachers were getting tickets. And what I'm.
Yes. Street cleaning interfered with the teachers coming to work and parking.
It wasn't me.
I know. I didn't blame you.
Okay, we have a motion made in second. Clerk call her off.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Got through that one.
Make a motion open for public comment?
Second.
No.
Stay in your lane there, Councilor.
I'm gonna go on that to ordinances for public hearing, second and final reading.
Ordinance number one for public hearing, and ordinance to amend ordinance number 3332, entitled, an ordinance adopting rules and regulations governing the employment of police officers for extrajudy details within the township.
Motion open for public?
Second.
At least second. Motion made second over public participation. Clerk call her off.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Motion closed public?
Second.
Motion made second to close public comment. Clerk call her off.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ordinance number one for a second and final reading, and ordinance to amend ordinance number 3332, entitled, an ordinance adopting rules and regulations governing the employment of police officers for extrajudy details within the township of Bellevue.
Take a motion.
Second. Motion made second. Clerk call her off.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Mr. Francantone?
Phil is Francantone, Prospect Avenue. I heard you saying that you're trimming the trees in town. I hope that you're doing around the schools first, because they're pretty low. Kids hang on them, and great, the kids are kids, they're gonna do that, so I hope you're doing around the schools first. And I want to know what property, resolution number seven is for.
That is a couple different, a couple different parcels on Bellevue Avenue and Union. It would encompass WET, two or three of those other buildings, all the way around the corner and include that big guest section. Of those five or six properties, three or four that are currently for sale.
Thank you, I just want to know which one it was.
I answered that, right? Anybody else? Mr. Francantone?
Mayor Council, Councilwoman DePena, regarding that rehabilitation program that's been in progress for over 20 years that I know of, I have the application to Edwin, I forget his last name. I've helped about 11 people on the program, right? People come to me for work, I just know you get it for the county. Three of them went all through the process and then declined the last minute. One of the problems with that program, you have to commit, now it's 10 years, it used to be seven years. The problem is, if you move out in less time, you have to repay all the costs of that program. These three people, when they found that, that stipulation, no way, number one, I ain't staying in Bellevue seven years, but that's the problem with that program. Just so you're aware of it. But it's an old program.
I don't see that as a problem, but.
Well, to some people, it's a problem. They don't want to commit to that. They can't commit to it, you know.
So is the alternative just no program, or?
No, no. I agree with program, just telling you some of the problems with, and why some people don't want to, you have to explain to them upfront, like these three people.
Well, that's why I want to have a workshop, though. They helped, wanted the workshop.
But that's, that's an old program. And Councilman Graziano, how are we working on the meters at the north end of Washington Avenue from Graylock to Nutley border? Are we gonna try to get them out there?
I do not have an update for you, but I have one the next week.
I, I called the DOT, uh, they have no problem with it, as long as you submit the request, they'll approve it. Um, thank you, Councilman Cosarelli, finally, let's see if it gets done here. And what I, what that was supposed to be, just the employees, they stayed all day, it's not an in and out parking lot. And you get a lot of them over here, which are, some of them not even handicapped, are using all those handicap parking spaces. And, uh, the budget, look, here we are, April, we're gonna get it done on time every month, but Ducci's got another excuse. Uh, now we want to verify some something.
Not excuse, man, just a fact. Some things I can't control.
I know, but you can introduce the budget and when you find out, you amend it. There's the amendment process.
That's one of the more next process, right? I'm sorry.
At least we could have some.
We're introducing it the next week, we, you cost us one week. I apologize for that.
And, uh, finally, look, we're paying a lot of taxes here, right? I don't mind paying my taxes. I'm sick and tired of paying taxes for these wealthy developers. This is nothing but another scam, and I hope you four, uh, older war councilmen, don't vote for this scam. You're taking all, an area redevelopment from Wett to the gas station, and then you jump across the street to Wett's parking lot? This is a scam. This is the developer that wants we, the taxpayers, to subsidize whatever grandiose plans he has for that already congested area and all that. So I hope reason dictates the night here, and the four of you, I have no hope for the other three, uh, but you four people, in the best interest of the town, and again, it's your pocket that's being picked by the, because this is the first step to give another pilot. And let me tell you something, there's gonna be some investigative agencies really looking into something going on in town. And blatantly, I mean, for a public official to put in writing to developers and real estate agents, "I'm gonna have a private meeting with you, and I am all for pilots and a patient." To put this in writing is an invitation to have certain authority visit the township of Bellevue. So let's not, like I said, I hope you four, sanity prevails tonight and all that. Those, if there's one of those houses, I know, old more back there, some of these are property maintenance issue. But Wett, I understand, it's seen in the paper, he's been trying to sell for a million and a half, I think, for a year, he can't sell it. I think it's.
Which is why it's going to the redevelopment area.
Let's get rid of it.
Yeah, well, that's no reason. If I can't sell my property, it's not up to you to have the rest of the taxpayers subsidize my development on that problem, alright?
That development areas are not subsidized.
Alright, okay? I mean, it appears there's a lot of porn sites now, so what happens, I, every night between nine thirty and eleven, I close my laundry. His parking lot is less and less full, so maybe you, so maybe he came to, maybe he took advice to your letter and said, and come to you and says, "Oh, Mayor, you'll give me a pilot?" Because that was the invitation that you foolishly put in writing. So if the law of you wants to stay out of the arm of the law, you will not approve, this is not an area need to redevelop. And if you want to stretch it to the last item on the thing, which is smart growth, this is not smart growth, because you can't move on Bellevue Avenue as it is now. So I'm trusting in you four people, I've known you a lot longer than the other three, or the other two at least, but I hope sanity prevails. I beg you to do so, in the best interest of Bellevue.
Mr. Sheldon.
Oh, good evening, Michael Sheldon, forty-seven Floyd Street. Um, just a few things tonight. First of all, Mr. Graziano, thank you for mentioning your discussion about shared services. Uh, the board just last, at the last meeting, approved a forty-eight thousand dollar contract with the Carter-Rabino to draw plans for this garage next to school number nine, and I've been told the price, projected price is anywhere between two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Fifty grand.
That's a huge chunk of change. If we can share services with the township and save that, the time is of the essence because we've already given the contract to the Carter-Rabino to begin drawing up plans. Over the last month or two, there's been ongoing discussions about the students coming from Essex Park, and I want to hopefully resolve this once and for all tonight. Uh, I went back through all of the spreadsheets to make sure that I had this exact numbers. For two thousand seventeen eighteen, the Essex Park complex was contributing twenty-five students to develop the school system, one of which was a senior, and it was also contributing to pre-K students to our district. For the current academic year, it is producing eighteen students and six pre-K. Now, I don't know how many of those pre-K kids may move into kindergarten next year, it's hard to tell at this point.
I was off by one, I said nineteen, it's really eighteen.
There's a little variation from year to year, right? It's not that much. If you look at just the overall numbers, twenty-seven total previous year, twenty-four currently.
So the trend is going down.
Just been a little reduction, but I don't know if it's statistically significant from one year to the next. In any case, we have, you know, two dozen or so kids coming from that complex to develop the school system, which is something to keep in mind.
Wait, wait, do that math again, two dozen?
Two thousand seventeen to eighteen, there were twenty-five kids, K through twelve.
Well, with all due respect, I don't care about seventeen, I care about now.
Alright, for now, we have eighteen kids.
Eighteen, not two dozen.
No seniors, so unless they move out, all these kids will, will graduate or move up one year next, for the next academic year, and there are six, six students from that complex in our pre-K program. So I just wanted you to, to have those, those final numbers.
Thank you.
Recently, the last planning board meeting, um, which dealt with a potential development on Washington Avenue across from the motorcycle mall, hopefully most of the council is aware of this, uh, planning board approved, uh, the construction of two buildings which will have a hundred and thirty-five residential units. The breakdown is forty-nine one-bedroom and eighty-six two-bedroom. And I got into a little bit of discussion with some of the board members about the impact those two-bedroom apartments would have on the school system. And, uh, with all due respect, uh, the mayor, Ms. Graziano, and Mr. Bande, well, Mr., the mayor and Mr. Bande, I'm sorry, Ms. Graziano was not part of that, that discussion, but they were arguing that this complex would generate between nine and fourteen students. And I said that didn't make any sense because you're, on that basis, you're saying that only one, one out of every nine two-bedroom apartments would generate a student in our school system. Now, Mr. Bande in particular, what kept citing, "Oh, Rutgers study, Rutgers study." So I went online and I found the Rutgers study, which is really comprehensive, and they guide you through the calculations, and I did that. I went through the calculations for this complex. Now, with a hundred and thirty-five market rate units, with the, uh, average, the median income for Bellevue at about sixty-two thousand, you just follow their calculations, the forty-nine one-bedroom units would generate only three point seven students, so that's, that's minimal. However, the eighty-six two-bedroom units, again, using Mr. Bande, the Rutgers study, which you.
Mr. Sheldon, please address the chair.
Right. But would generate fifty-two point four six students, or, I'm sorry, forty-eight point eight, which brings the grand total to fifty-two point four six. Now, I asked the attorney during this, this hearing, if, if they were going to go ask for a pilot or a tax abatement. She said, "Not at this point," but she couldn't rule out that possibility. My concern is that, that property right now, the land assessment is at eighty thousand dollars. You get eighty thousand dollars total for the land value, roughly half of that goes to the board, so we get about forty thousand dollars, which at the current rate of things would pay for the education of about two students each year, because it's cost easily eight, now, over eighteen thousand dollars when all expenses are.
It's already approved.
But I'm just, I'm letting you guys know what the dangers are.
Thank you, Mr. Sheldon, you didn't get wrapped up though.
I'm almost there, I'm almost there. If you guys go ahead and grant a pilot, which I'm sure is going to happen.
You're, you're really wasting a lot of time because there, there is no pilot and there can't be a pilot. It's already through the planning board.
It's already done.
Yeah, but, but the Soho. The Soho Hospital is a classic example. That project was approved, a year later, they came back before this board.
There'll be multiple meetings that you will be able to sit on over the course of the next sixteen to eighteen months in order for us to grant a pilot.
Well, I'm just, you need, as, as I've said earlier, the New Jersey School Board Association has asked, in communities where pilots and a lot of residential is being contemplated, that as a courtesy to the board and to the rest of the community, to make a seat at, at the governing body's table to involve at least one of the, the board member. Now, I don't care if you use Dr. Tonko or some smaller group of trustees, but you need to have input into these decisions before you grant pilots because they can have devastating impact on our school system and the quality of education.
Thank you, I do need to wrap up, Mr. Sheldon.
Alright, well, I have other things I wanted to talk about, but I'll save those for the next video.
Thank you. Just, just to set the record straight, uh, you have your numbers, your own numbers, just so you know, discount what you just said, you got done telling us about Essex Park only has nineteen students in it.
Eighteen, eighteen, with six and, with another six in pre-K.
Look, I, I let you talk, let me talk. Eighteen students and there's two hundred and sixty-two units there, but yet you're trying to convince us that a hundred and thirty-two units is gonna create sixty kids. So we, we go by statistics here in Bellevue, Essex Park is a gated community, townhouse-style development. You would expect more kids there, but out of two hundred and sixty-two units, there's only eighteen kids. So I do not agree with you that a hundred and thirty-two apartments are gonna create sixty kids.
It's actually twenty-four. It's actually twenty-four.
Oh, yeah, twenty-four. I still can't get anywhere near sixty with, with apartments. But what I will do, if the school district is that interested in students, if you want to get, whether it's, what number we agree on, fifteen thousand, seventeen thousand per kid, rather than getting.
It's not that.
I'm just gonna, I'm using round numbers, I don't have that debate. Let's just call it fifteen thousand dollars per kid. If you want to just get paid fifteen thousand dollars per kid that comes out of that district and not get your proportional share of the taxes, I'll make that deal with you. Because, because Essex Park is paying sixty thousand dollars per kid to the school district. So instead, I'll make you a deal. Those eighteen or nineteen or even twenty-four kids, I will give you fifteen thousand dollars per kid and let us keep all the other revenue that the school district gets. Would you take that deal?
I would love to see when you guys are contemplating.
I guess your answer is no.
No, 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 actually, I, I would be willing to, to, to see that arrangement big big. When you guys are contemplating pilots.
We're, we're, I, I was just gonna make, you said your piece, I said my piece.
What is fair, and I'm not speaking, I'm not speaking on behalf of the board, but I'm speaking as, as just a concerned citizen. I always make that clear.
I, I'll make that deal, I will make that deal. We can't have this debate back and forth, but you said your piece and I said mine. I'll make that deal anytime, anytime I'll make that deal. If you want to do it at the motorcycle mall across the street, if you want your cost per kid, and we count those kids, we'll give you that number, as opposed to getting a third of all the revenue that comes in. I'll make that deal.
What I would like to see happen, when you have an applicant, a developer here, wanting a pilot, and you have their planner saying.
That developer does not want a pilot.
Let me just finish.
Just separate facts.
When the planner says, "We want to put a hundred units in and we're only expecting five kids to come," have them make the deal with you that if, if there are any additional kids beyond the number they quote, that they'll directly write a check to reimburse the school district.
I would absolutely do that deal. I would do that deal.
That would be wonderful.
Only on the counter side, when you have more revenue coming in than kids that are generated, you give that back to us. I'll do that deal with you. How about that?
I, I, it would be, I would be, I would be okay with that.
That's not, that's not dealing with the situation.
I don't think you'd be okay with that. Okay, I, I.
This conversation should really.
I, I agree, I agree, we're done, thank you, just a friendly debate, sorry about it.
Nick, the deal's settled, you so. I get a kick every time I come. So do we. Anyway, I just wanted to speak about the, a little bit about the color run. First of all, I wanted to thank the council for the approval of lighting up the town hall blue on April second for autism awareness. Uh, I really appreciated that.
Was it better than last year?
It was better than last year.
We tried a lot harder.
And next year will be even better, for sure. And, uh, so the whole autism community, uh, thank for that. And I wanted to just speak a little bit about our color run that went, that we had this past Saturday, um, which, you know, many of you have attended, and it was very successful. It was a first-time event. Uh, we had over four hundred and fifty people attend this event. We raised a lot of money for autism awareness, um, money will be going, all money coming in, uh, will be going out to, um, a couple of autism awareness committees, as well as back, right back to our school's, um, special services. Just about a hundred percent of the money will be, will be going, in fact, we don't have figures. But, uh, for those who did not, um, can find, uh, find me on Facebook, Nick Dito, and you'll see some tremendous pictures, uh, the drone video will be there. Uh, again, like I said, we had four hundred and fifty people come. Councilman Robel was there, as was, uh, our committee, DePena, and, um, Cosarelli and, and Chris here from the board event. Councilman Graziano also participated, as well as the mayor. And, uh, if you would have seen the look on, on the, the children's faces that went through this, this color run and, and, and the excitement it generated for autism awareness, it really, really made me proud to be from Bellevue and continue to be from Bellevue. And in spite of all the other things that we fight about, uh, and disagree about, it was one thing that was really brought the township together and, and that community, and that autism community, and those children, those schoolchildren who were there and, and participated in this, and I expect it to be, um, to, to double next year, and we will continue to do it with the help of the council. And I thank the mayor for allowing us to do this, and Dr. Tonko, uh, on our steam board event, and I really, really appreciate it, and I just wanted to make that public.
Thank you.
Great job, Nick.
I do, uh, just so the council knows, I, I do want to make some comments on that, but I'm a little way too far.
Okay, sorry. Never mind.
Anybody else?
Vic Mafucci, sixty-one Continental Avenue. West July for photo of the storm sort that was collapsing on my corner.
Yeah.
It continues to get worse. Since last fall, there's been an OEM plastic barrier on top of it to keep the cars from running into it. Uh, every time it's a windstorm, that barrier winds up in the middle of the street. I've moved it a number of times. I did it last week, and back an hour later, it was right back in the middle again. Anyway, it's not just the asphalt part of the street, there's at least six inches of concrete with the black stone underneath the original street that is collapsing also. So I hope in the budget, you included funds to make that repair. Sure. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Mary Harris, Quitton Street. Now, about the parking situation.
Parking where, ma'am?
Quitton Street or actually.
Oh, in your understreet, okay. So.
Yes, I'm sure Bellevue, I feel like Bellevue should give me a pat on the back because of my complaint, they have written numerous tickets. However.
You got one.
No. Because I still have a place to park. Because now, the cars are now parking more up on Quitton Street because they cannot park, I guess legally, on Cleveland Street. So I'd like to know what kind of, what resolution will come, because we still have, we have even less parking now, because now we have more cars parked up on Quitton Street. And there's still situations of.
Parking spots are public.
Cars parking, excuse me?
That's, well, I want to, I want to call the chief as soon as you're done.
Okay. Cars parking that, uh, stay for days or whatever, but now, because there's alternate sign for street sweeping, they're not in the same place, so can't call and complain because they're moved so frequently. So it's just an ongoing, uh, problem.
What, uh, you live there, you deal with it all the time.
All the time, and I probably won't have a place to park tonight because I've been at the meeting for so long and now it's prime time. So I'll be sitting, sitting in the middle of the street or driving around, I hope I have a full tank of gas, waiting for somebody to come out or either after twelve o'clock, when the restaurant closes, I should be able to have a place to park.
So I, I, you live there, you're familiar with it. Let me ask you, if you were sitting up here, what would you do to solve the problem?
I don't know, that's why I came to you. So you can't tell me.
Well, I can't create more streets to give more, I mean, I'm, I'm sympathetic and we're sympathetic, the chief, your first complaint was, was heard and the police responded.
Our complaint is there's still parking there.
Right, but now the parking.
But they're non, non-street residents, am I correct, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay. Only, only other possible solution is a residential street permit, parking permit. All the other.
For that particular.
For that particular street, Quitton Street residents.
Oh, but now, just like.
That's something the council's willing to consider, we can certainly look at.
Just like the, the initial complaint where we initially went out and ticketed cars and they spread out.
Yeah.
Would, would that continue?
We halted, we also halted solar valley parking from saving spots still. So I thought it would.
But solar is now still parking valley, parking the cars.
I understand that, ma'am, again, the way the law is, public parking is public parking.
So what can we?
The only other solution, Mr. Mayor, would be to, uh, do an ordinance on Quitton Street residential permit parking only.
So rather than us, right, because they might have a spillover effect, so rather than us just act uniformly like that, is that something that your traffic department can come up with a feasibility study?
I'm gonna have to do, yes.
With the consequences.
If you show directly to do so, do so.
Mr. Manager, if you can ask for, yeah?
I thought they were doing that, doing a study in.
I think the first thing was enforcement, I thought.
Yes, now this is the answer.
The first step is enforcement, the second step is now.
Try and permit.
Enforcement didn't work, or had unintended consequence, unfortunately. Now we're going to go to Plan B, I guess. I, ma'am, I'm not a police officer, so I'm not a traffic.
But we did, they showed a lot of comments there.
I see them, they've been, you know, people coming out complaining.
We'll, we'll have a feasibility study.
Which was not really the intention. The intention is just for the residents to have a place to park.
That's why we call it the unintended consequences. We'll, we'll have an answer though shortly. Sorry about that. I mean, I wish I could, I wish I can solve the problem overnight.
You can't selective enforcement, you can't selective enforcement.
Do we have anybody else for public?
Motion to close public?
Motion made second to close participation, clerk color roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumeloburg?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Right before we go into the resolution, I think the council has some comments on our color run. So I was there, Nick, great job. I know the difficulty of organizing first-time events. I know they, they're usually difficult. You did a phenomenal job, you and the team hit it out of the park. It was a fun run. Yeah, it was, it was definitely fun, it was community building. And the one thing that I noticed, and this is a tribute, I guess, to some of our board, I happen to notice a lot of teachers that don't live in Belleville that came to support, especially the number seven school teachers. And seeing them, and I was talking to them, I said, "Do you live in Belleville?" "No, we don't live in Belleville, but we came here to support." And that was because I think we got into home schools or whatever, we were further. I think that, that was a great event to bring everybody together, and I look forward to doing it again. The only thing that somebody mentioned is potentially a Sunday next year, because a lot of people that wanted to participate had kids in sports programs. So a Sunday, a Sunday, you might even get a heck of a lot more.
We will, we will start our committee meeting in October, when the school starts much earlier than we did this past, and we have, I have a lot of interest of, we'll call them laypeople, who want to be on the committee with us, which will hopefully bring in more corporate sponsors and so on. And it will be a, it will be an event. The mayor and no other.
Absolutely. Okay, we're moving on to email. We're moving on to consent agenda.
Make a motion, move the consent agenda.